Half a day and good afternoon. The Committee on Housing, Utilities, Public Safety and Homeland Security is now called to order this public hearing. Excuse me. Homeland Security is calling this public hearing to order. It is now 1:20 PM on Wednesday, October 10, 2018. Notice of this public hearing was provided to senators, stakeholders, and local media. A five-day notice was provided on Tuesday, October 2, 2018, and a 48-hour notice was provided on Monday, October 8, 2018, thus meeting the requirements of the open government law. The public hearing is also being broadcasted on local television, so please speak clearly into the microphone. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 2:00 PM on October 12, 2018. Testimonies may be hand-delivered or mailed to the Guam Congress Building at 163 Chalan Santo Papa, Haganya, Guam, 96910, or it may be emailed to senator TC Nelson at GuamLegislature.org. I know in the agenda it states that we were going to do Bill 144 first, but I'd like us to address Bill Number 324, just so that we can spend a little bit more time on Bill Number 144. I'd like to thank Speaker Terahy, Senator Mary Torres, and Senator Lee for their attendance, and we will address Bill Number 324. Bill Number 324 is an act to add a new subsection 51.40 to Chapter 59, Title IX, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the criminalization of disarming of peace officers introduced by myself. As stated in the bill's intent, there is currently no law criminalizing the act of disarming a peace officer. Such an act presents a clear danger to the community due to the type of response we could expect from the peace officer, especially in a crowded area. By codifying the crime, we can be more clear about the severity of this issue. I'd also like to address the elephant in the room for those who suspect that this bill is meant to continue the situation at the GBB BBQ Block Party in the past months. This bill was introduced in response to the lack of a statute criminalizing the act as these charges would not be applicable to this certain situation, as it would be enacted after the fact. I also want to remind the public that this isn't the only time in recent history then an officer was disarmed. In 2015, murder suspect Dmitry Lobanov disarmed a peace officer during routine processing at the Haganya precinct. The suspect then aimed the weapon at a detective and was met with the expected response as the other officers aimed at the suspect and ordered him to stand down. Rather than doing so, the suspect discharged the weapon upon himself and died of the self-inflicted gunshot wound. If the suspect had not discharged the weapon on himself, he would not have been charged with the act of disarming of a peace officer, as it is not currently codified. And perhaps, the conversation of whether or not it should be criminalized would have been more greatly discussed in the community. And I'd like to now call anyone that would like to testify on Bill Number 324. Half a day. Can you please state your name for the record?
Yes, ma'am. Half a day, Madam Chair, members of the Guam Legislature. My name is Stephen Stefan A. Amagin, a police lieutenant that's been blessed to be employed with the Guam Police Department for 27 years and currently the deputy precinct commander for Haganya Precinct Command. I am here today to show my support for Bill 324-34, which is an act to add a new subsection 55.40 to Chapter 55, which is the interference with the government operations and law enforcement of Title IX of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to the criminalization of disarming of peace officers. Throughout my 20 years as a police officer with the Guam Police Department, I can only recall two incidents that peace officers was disarmed. One incident where a person has successfully retrieved the harm from a peace officer, ended shooting himself, and our law enforcement committee was blessed that the peace officer was not harmed. And which is why I'm here too, because I was tasked to oversee that investigation, and I know how lucky we were at that time that the police officer or the peace officer survived that incident. Second incident is of this year that prompted this bill to be introduced to criminalize such act. Again, we were blessed that no one was injured as a result of the recent incident. As the deputy precinct commander of Haganya Precinct Command, safety is always my concern for my fellow workers, fellow public servants, who are out patrolling our streets 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Shortly after the last incident, I inform our patrol supervisors to have our patrol officers take extra precautionary measures while in public performing their duties and serving and protecting our community, our island, and our people. Precautionary measures in the event that other members of our community will follow the trend of disarming our peace officers. This bill went passing to law will make the public be aware that it is illegal to disarm a peace officer. I am humbly asking for your overwhelming support of this bill. The passage of this bill is indicative of your support for the safety of our peace officers, especially our hard-working men and women in blues, our frontline of defense that are out there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, in their efforts to keep our island safe. That concludes my testimony, short and brief.
Thank you, Mr. Amagin. I'd like to also add that this, the nationwide, in multiple jurisdictions, there is already laws in place that do say that it is illegal to disarm a police officer or a law enforcement officer. So this is absolutely something that we need to do, I feel, and I'd like to open it up for any of the senators if they have any questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just at this time want to thank you so much for coming forward and providing this testimony. It's very important that members of our community participate in this process in this way, and I certainly want to thank you for your 27 years of service to our island, but also for giving us a little insight, especially since you were involved in the first incident. So we certainly want to work with the committee to ensure that not only are our law enforcement officers safe every single day, but that they, you know, do their great work in protecting all of us in our community. So thank you for your service and thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you again, Mr. Amagin. Just wanted to check, when the officers were requested to take additional precautionary measures, is there a standard precautionary measure that they have been advised to take?
Yes, all I informed them is just be aware of their surroundings, situational awareness, and make sure that, you know, their space are not invaded while they're pretty much performing their duties out there in the streets, because pretty much they are my coworkers, and anything happens to them, I'll be more than, more responsible, I'll be have to answer to the family why no precautionary measures were taken, or any type of trainings that were provided for our personnel.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Amagin, for having the courage to come down here and speak in support of this bill. I want to thank you for all the hard work you've done in ensuring that we are protected, ensuring that the community is protected, and I want to thank your colleagues, our law enforcement officers, for doing so as well. I feel that this bill is a proper bill to really ensure that also as policymakers, we are charged to protect those who protect us. And so thank you for your continued selfless service and sacrifice willingly putting on the uniform, knowing that every day is a day that possible harm to you or your fellow law enforcement personnel. So thank you, and thank you for coming down.
Lastly, ma'am, I just want to thank you for introducing this bill. Now I can pretty much rest assured that I'll be able to sleep well at night, that we have some measures, hopefully it will pass, that will protect our men, women, and blues out there in the street, and my fellow peace officers here in Ireland, protecting this island.
Thank you, sir. Now we will address Bill Number 144-34. Just a quick recap of what has transpired in the past year and a half. We have held several roundtable hearings and multiple meetings to discuss this landlord/tenant bill. Many people, many senators in the past felt that it is, there's certainly a need to pass this bill, but for some reason or another, or certainly a need to pass a bill into law that regulates landlord and tenant relationships, but some way or another, for decades now, there has not been an updated code or statute in our books as we transition, as real estate transitions. And so now it is, we've been working on this bill for about a year and a half, reaching out to all stakeholders, and really in this bill, we want to ensure the safety of landlord and tenant relationships. And we've also consulted many times with our legislative council to ensure that this bill does not conflict with the current statute in place, and our legislative council has reviewed this bill thoroughly multiple times. And so now we are addressing the final form of this bill. We did have a public hearing in the past in regards to this bill, but I feel that as due diligence, we readdressed the changes that were made as a result of the public hearing with an additional public hearing to let our community know that we are working to ensure that there is a law in place to protect our landlords and our tenants. I'd like to call up anyone who would like to give testimony at this time on Bill Number I'm sorry, if I may, I was asked to just state some of the specifics that we addressed in our previous public hearing on this bill, and if you just bear with me so that the public will know, some of the changes that we've made. So in the previous public hearing, subsection 28201 in reference to the security deposit, there was a statement that the requirement was too vague, so we changed it to one month's rent plus additional $500 for a pet deposit and additional security if tenant has a pet in cases where pet damages become excessive, which is of course protecting the interest of the landlord. We also mandated a timeline of 14 days for landlords to hold security deposit, because there were a lot of concerns of landlords keeping the security deposit and then perhaps the security deposited as a bank collecting interest, but the tenant does not receive the security deposit back to them, and so the interest therefore that is collected goes to whoever is renting or leasing out the unit, and the tenant only receives the security deposit given. It also sets a statute of limitation of one year for tenant to act to recover security deposit, which sets legal grounds of collecting and legal costs. Subsection 28202, where it says in the insert "not caused by tenant," inserts were added at the end of subsections A1 and 2 to ensure protection for the tenant. Subsection 28203 inserts, unless buyer is credited the security deposit and all parties are notified, at which time the buyer becomes liable for the security deposit and any refunds, we added at the end of subsection A, this protects the original landlord if building is sold and security deposit is transferred. Subsection 48206, rights to access, was too vague, and so we added recommendations, which is A, the tenant shall not unreasonably withhold the tenant's consent to the landlord to enter into the dwelling unit in order to inspect the premise, make necessary or agreed repairs, decoration, alterations, or improvement, supply services as agreed, or exhibit the dwelling unit to prospective purchasers, mortgagers, mortgagees, or tenants. Item B, the landlord shall not abuse the right of access nor use it to harass the tenant, except in the case of emergency, or where impracticable to do so, the landlord shall give the tenant at least 24 hours' notice of the landlord's intent to enter, and shall enter only during reasonable hours. Item C, the landlord shall have no other right of entry except by court order unless the tenant appears to have abandoned the premises, or the landlord may, during an extended absence of the tenant, enter the dwelling unit as reasonably necessary for purposes of inspection, maintenance, and safekeeping. Subsection 48303, self-help for minor defects and repairs, which addresses withholding of rent, which protects both landlord and tenant. Subsection 48304, wrongful failure to provide essential services, we inserted in item A2, but in no case will landlord be responsible or liable for costs of substitute housing unless agreed to in writing by both parties. Subsection 48313, abandonment, and it is defined, defines landlord's courses of actions that can be taken if dwelling unit is abandoned. And subsection 48315, refusal of lawful access, we inserted language, also landlord, in item B, also landlord shall return the portion of the security deposit which is recoverable by the tenant under section 48201 of this chapter. And so, like I said, it's been 40 years that since we've last had an update to our statute in regards to landlord and tenant agreements, and so I feel that I'd like to thank everyone for their hard work of coming to the table. I'd like to thank the stakeholders, Guam Association of Realtors, the Guam Real Estate Commission, GURA, Guam Housing Corporation, and also tenants, and also independent landlords that have called in and added perspective on the bill. I'd also thank our legal team for working closely with us on ensuring that this bill is just and fair, and it does not conflict with current law. So perhaps we can start with GURA.
Half a day. My name is Pedro A. Leon Guerrero Jr., Deputy Director at GURA. Thank you, Senator Nelson, and members of the committee, for this opportunity to contribute our comments on Bill 144-34COR, the proposed Guam Landlord and Tenant Rental Act. We have thoroughly reviewed the bill to assess its impacts to housing programs administered by GURA. As the landlord operating 750 units of affordable housing in sites around the island, we are well familiar with the challenges of identifying and retaining good residents. GURA also assists thousands of clients through the issuance of housing vouchers so that they may rent from private property owners of their choosing. We are fortunate to have the benefit of well-established federal rules and regulations to provide a sound framework for the operation of our residential housing. We were pleased to find that in reviewing our processes against those stipulated in the bill, that our policies capture many of the same requirements. Federal guidance from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, directs that GURA adopt and use the more stringent of the federal or local law, where the two might come to comparison. In the attachment, we took the opportunity to point out any provisions which may conflict with HUD regulations. We also provide comments for your consideration that while not in conflict with federal regulations, may provide a beneficial perspective. Altogether, GURA supports the Bill 144-34. Support for Bill 144-34 is positive. It is our hope that through your bill, landlords and tenants establish a basis of fair play for all who seek to engage in residential real property leasing. Thank you again, and God bless. This is your.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leon Guerrero, for your testimony. Mr. Villanueva?
Half a day, Senator Tilly Nelson, Senator and committees. My name is Caesar Villanueva. I'm the special assistant to the President of Guam Housing Corporation. We have reviewed the bill, Bill 144-34, and are in support of the bill. I think it's very good timing that the committee as a whole had put this bill together, had reviewed it, put many adoptions to it, of course, through it, because the tenant, tenant and landlord relationship is sometimes can get testy for many reasons, and updating it to put a lot of these provisions in it that will help that relationship and fair play, like our partner here at GURA said, obviously will help move these processes forward, and fair play, if it goes to a point where you need to go into legal remedies, it does protect both parties. We at Guam Housing do have about 157 low-income rentals. We do have some issues when we do have tenants that abandon the unit, and GHC has to shoulder the cost to repair, replace, and many times we do have possessions of the former tenant that we many times would have to discard or donate to because of the fact that they just basically leave. So provisions should be in place to prevent those type of things, so we're in support of the bill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Villanueva. Ms. Miller or Chris?
Senator, thank you, Speaker, senators. I'm Chris Felix. I'm president of the Guam Association of Realtors, and I've been a Realtor here in Guam for the past 46 years now. Boy, I'm getting old. And I've been very active in landlord/tenant. This is the, if I remember correctly, the third or fourth attempt to get a landlord/tenant act on Guam, and I'd really like to thank you, Senator, for the last year and a half of working with us and all the other players in this field to make this a true landlord/tenant act. Not a landlord act and not a tenant act, but a landlord/tenant act. This is the first time we've been able to sit down with you, your staff, especially Bernice. I'd like to thank her for all the work she did on changing and changing, but to be able to sit down and really go through the good, the bad, and the ugly, and how to make this really happen. You know, over the last 40 years, you know, we've seen it be a landlord, a time for landlords where they control, like if you remember in the 80s, landlords just ruled this island. Poor tenants had no say, no control. Landlords could ask for six months deposits and one year pay in advance, and rents for a two-bedroom were 1,500 a month, and take it or leave it, you know, and then it shifted. And just a few years ago, it was a tenant act, and the tenants controlled, you know. We don't care if, are you breathing? Okay, come move in, please, you know, and that's the way it has been. This bill, it becomes law, which I really, we really hope it does, will put an even playing field and even this thing out, where even during these shifts, we have something we can fall back on that is fair, fair to both tenants and fair to both landlords. We've tried hard to be fair in our work with you, Senator. We think we have. There's parts we gave in that we didn't want to give in, but you fought for, and you were right, you know, and there are parts we fought for, and we felt we were right, and we appreciate your giving in. So we just, we stand in support of this bill. There's one minor change, section 48311, subsection B, there's a clause there that talks about 30 days. You adjusted the upper part to five days, you forgot to adjust that part to 30. We've discussed it, and it's all been agreed to, that it should be a five-day notice, because otherwise it leads into two, three months of somebody can float without paying any rent, and this will make it fair. So that's, besides that, this is exactly what we've worked out. We think it's fair and reasonable, and we stand in support, and we thank you for all the hard work you've done on this.
Thank you very much, Chris. Mrs. Miller, would you like to?
Thank you. Maria Miller, immediate past president of GARA. I'm just here basically to support this. I appreciate it so much. It's been my goal for the past 12 years since I landed in Guam to have a landlord/tenant code here, you know, so I'm very thankful, and I'm in total support of this bill, with that exception that we changed the 30 days to five days, you know, and thank you very much.
Right. I'd like to thank all of you for coming out, and I'm tracking the change, and it was overlooked, and so, and we also received the email, so thank you for the email, and so we will address that as we move it forward on the session floor. And yes, it's been a long road, and I'm glad that we can see something concrete come into fruition with all the hard work that the community has done and all the stakeholders. So thank you very much for bearing with us also, and being flexible, and the meetings, making yourself available for the meetings that we requested to ensure that we do have a landlord/tenant act, and so I'd like to thank all of you today. This has exhausted our schedule for the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. I got a little bit excited. I'd like to open it up for my colleagues to ask any questions.
I just want to thank GURA for taking the time to look at the little nuances and the minor corrections that, you know, a lot of times they're just typographical or they're just overlooked in the redrafting of things. But there's one thing I wanted to note, that also in section 48101, it addresses territorial application, and I think that the use of territory is not prohibited, so we might just want to take that out, and I'm sure it's just an oversight from the past, but territory should be eliminated from there. But I also, it was interesting when I first looked at the landlord/tenant act and looked at the history of introduction of them, we always have a situation, and Mr. Felix alluded to this, of in real estate, there's always a pro lessi point of view and a pro lesser point of view, and it's smart that we now have something that is considered neutral ground. But I think more so in looking at the rental market on Guam, there are two things that the community has been sensitive to that I believe this legislation addresses. One is we have a transient population with the military, for example, that comes in and out, or contract workers, who are accustomed to a standard, and this then brings us closer to that standard that is customary across the nation and other areas. other areas. So that's a very good thing for Guam to have a standard operating rental act. But I think the other thing too that a lot of us have been sensitive to is what we perceive as a slum landlord situation where people who are disadvantaged or aren't very savvy in the, in the world of, of real estate are taken advantage of. And for the people that, that are more disadvantaged or don't have the wherewithal to seek help, this is a very good relief for them. So I want to commend the author for address, for introducing a rental act that not only levels the playing field, but does an equal good for the advantaged landlord with the wherewithal and also the disadvantaged tenant who may not know that they are being taken advantage of or mistreated. So I think, you know, this is a home run piece of legislation, so congratulations. And thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Speaker.
I just wanted to clarify that if it's all of your understanding, because at the other, at an earlier hearing, I know there were several, but at one of them, there was a discussion about whether this would apply to residential versus commercial leases. And so I'm seeing that the definition of dwelling is the same as the introduced bill, but what is your understanding?
I think it's covered in 4101 that it's residential only. It does not address commercial relationships.
All right. That, for dwelling.
For dwelling unit.
Yeah, and so dwelling, the definition's exactly the same as it was in the original bill. And I think you were the one that brought that up at the hearing though, so that's why I wanted to make sure that.
I appreciate it. No, we just wanted to make sure that commercial was not involved. And it was brought to my attention. I was corrected and thank you.
Perfect then. So we're all in agreement. And I very much appreciate your testimony, all of you. It's, it's great to hear that you're, you, you've worked through all the issues that you, you found in the bill and, and I very much appreciate the detail that you've provided to us. That's very helpful. Sido Smasi.
Thank you, Speaker. Senator Lee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And yes, I also want to thank you all for, for participating in this process and, and I know that all of the stakeholders have really come together with Senator Nelson's office and spent a great deal of time on this. And so we appreciate that because we all know that sometimes the devil really is in the details. And so we want to make sure that we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is with regard to this, all of the legislation that we're, we're addressing. It's my understanding that the Senator, I guess after a public hearing or roundtable discussion that we had on this bill in August of 2017, received some feedback from GAR. And there were a couple of definitions that you had asked to be changed, and I think all of them were changed with, with the exception of just one. So I wanted to just ask you, the suggestion for, it's on page four of the bill, under the definitions, letter H, essential services, is a little bit different than what you had suggested. So your suggestion was essential services should be services needed for the enjoyment and use of the rented dwelling unit. And the language in the bill is essential services refers to the basic needs such as running water, electricity, gas, or hot water. And so this is very, pretty specific. And so I just wanted to make sure that that's, you had a discussion about that or how that came to?
Yes, we did. Our proposal was based on Hawaii law, but this, this worked out to be acceptable. It's fine. It's actually, I think, a little better. It's a little more down-to-earth and specific. The Hawaii law was kind of out safety and pretty and, you know, it's hard, how do you enforce something? This becomes very enforceable and protects the tenant better, I think.
Right, it is much more specific, the Hawaii, I mean, for the enjoyment and use of the rented dwelling is kind of, so it makes it easier for us to, or for the government to enforce. So yeah, we certainly want to ensure that, and I'm also pretty shocked that we've all been operating all these, all this time without a landlord/tenant act. So I certainly want to thank the Chair for her leadership on this, but also all of you for coming to the table and making sure that we have an equitable solution going forward. So Sido Smasi for your time. Thank you.
Okay, I believe now that exhausts our items on the agenda, thank you again for all of you coming. And the time is now 2:54. 1:54. Okay, thank you very much. Have a good day. God bless.